Allow this meeting, the Westland City Council order. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Mike McDermott.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Present.
Councilwoman Green.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Pro Tem Londo.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
Accord, Ms. President.
Okay, for announcements and presentations, I'd like to invite the Mayor, the City Clerk, State Representative Kevin Coleman, and Councilwoman Tasha Green to meet us out front down here. Can you hear me now? There we are. So, as you know, this is Councilwoman Green's last council meeting here with the City of Westland, so on behalf of the City of Westland and the City Council, we'd like to present you with this plaque in recognition for your service to the community, to the residents, and the City Council. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank Council President. Councilwoman Green, on behalf of the citizens of the City of Westland, we too would like to recognize you in recognition of your patriotic and meritorious service as a member of the Westland City Council from January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2021. Thank you for your service.
Councilwoman Green, on behalf of the state of Michigan, I just wanted to congratulate you on your four years of service to the residents, the people of the City of Westland. It's certainly something special to serve in local office. I know when you ran for office in 2017, you fought really hard for your seat. You served your residents well, you put your heart into the job. So it's my honor as your state representative to present you with a special tribute and congratulate you on four years of service, and best of luck with your next endeavor. So, congratulations.
And for further announcements and presentations, we bring back State Representative Kevin Coleman.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Mayor, Administration. I appreciate you giving me just a couple minutes tonight to, first of all, wish everybody a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy Kwanzaa. I know Hanukkah's past. Whatever holiday you're celebrating, I hope you have a safe, enjoyable, and loving holiday with your loved ones and your family members. And stay safe out there on the roads, and let's hope for maybe a white Christmas, but not too slippery out there on the roads. First of all, I'd like to just announce that Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson and I will be resuming our coffee hours at the Westland Library in January, and that'll be the second Monday. It's always the second Monday of the month at 9:00 a.m. at the Westland Library, so that's January 10th at 9:00 a.m. at the Westland Library. And that's where we get into more specifics about what we're working on as far as legislation, and what's going on at the state, and what's going on at the county. So, the last few weeks, we've been pretty busy up in Lansing allocating some of the federal funds that have been coming back to the state and figuring out how to spend that money. We are going to be going into the new year, working on our supplemental budgets as well, so there'll be a whole lot more money coming through the state government, and certainly a lot of discussion about how and where to spend those dollars. So, I'm always open to hearing from council members, and certainly working well with the administration, and talking with Westland residents about what they think our priorities should be. And for that reason, I'll give you my email. My office phone number, (517) 373-2576, and my cellphone, (734) 751-6321. Lastly, I have this special tribute, which is kind of more on a sad note, but this is for the family of Ms. Riester Everett, who we lost this year in 2021. We lost her a couple months ago, and I had been waiting to get the governor's signature on this special tribute, and then to get ahold of her family, and I had been calling her the last few weeks, or calling her family the last few weeks to get ahold of them. And unfortunately, I found out today that her husband, Arnell, passed a couple weeks after she did, and I wasn't aware of that, but I talked to our Councilwoman Green, and she let me know what happened. But this tribute is for a very special person, a very special lady in our community, Riester Everett. She died at the age of 91. She moved to the Westland Annapolis Park neighborhood in the 1950s, back when it was Nankin Township. She was a member of Southeast Westland Homeowners Association, Westland Democratic Club, and the NAACP. She was an activist for equity and civil rights. She marched alongside Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in Detroit, and she had a record and a lifestyle of holding those in power accountable. And she supported candidates seeking public office at local, state, and federal levels. And she did a whole lot more things, and she had a family of six children and nearly 20 grandchildren, and I called her daughter today and let her know that this would be on her way to her family. So, this is in honor of a very special lady, Riester Everett. So, I'm going to pass this along to Councilwoman Green to take to the family. I appreciate you doing that. That's all I have for you this evening. Thank you, City Council. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you, Kevin. We now move to questions or input on the agenda. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked will be answered during the agenda item following a motion and support from council. Is there anyone on my left? Turn to the right.
Richard Graham from Westland, and also with Move Westland Forward. Happy holidays, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Wild, City Council, especially Councilwoman Tasha Green. Appreciate all your service over the last four years. You were here for all the residents, and, you know, many of us deeply appreciate that. One item to discuss today, New Business, Item 11. I think that's the right item regarding a new pay plan. Just want to make sure, I assume this is going to pass, but just want to make sure the residents that are listening understand what this new pay plan is for the mayor, the directors. I think that rolls down to then the City Council if it is based on union pay, but a lot of things are in here that you may not see if you just look online. It looks like an over 3.5% raise for those directors, those deputy mayor, mayor, the clerk. But what's hidden in there, which is interesting, and please look at this from your own work, and at over 15 years, so if you're 16 years as an employee, you get 33 days vacation. That's seven weeks of vacation. Obviously, that's not reality, unless maybe from a government standpoint. But what's even more interesting, they have uncut that. And what uncut means is, they can cash that time in for pay. So, for 12 months of work, they can get, if they cash that in at just 16 years, they can get over 13 and 1/2 months of pay for just 12 months of work. Again, really not reality in the real world. Again, maybe in government, where they use taxpayer dollars for everything, that's, you know, that's, I guess, acceptable. But other things that are hidden in here is car allowance, as an example. That goes up 20, 25%, I guess, to $2,500 a month, so that's an increase. A new thing is, they get $100 per month for phone allowance, or that's another $1,200. And the red in here means additions. And there's also for health and wellness. I guess these employees will get $100 per month for better health among employees. So if you roll in the extra 500 for the car, the extra 100 a month, that's 1,200, another 100, that's another 1,200, I mean, you're approaching another approximately 3% or higher in pay increase. So, the average director, the average person is going to see over a 6% raise. Now, if they cash in their vacation time, you're talking about a 10, 20, 30% raise for, you know, all that vacation time, all the time off, which in 2020 was 15 days off additionally, so another three weeks. So, again, I assume this is going to pass. I assume that's not going to be questioned based on Team Wild, but that's the facts behind it for those that are listening. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? All right, we'll close citizens' comments on the agenda and move to consent calendar. Is there a motion? It's a motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Godbout. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of bid award extension with ABS storage products for police vehicle outfitting. Amount not to exceed $16,035.36 per vehicle. Approval of annual animal sheltering agreement with the Michigan Humane Society. The agreement should be for one year, commencing January 1, 2022, ending December 31, 2022, in the amount of $8,691.67 per month. Adoption of Ordinance 248A-110, an ordinance to amend the Westland City Code by amending Section 110.2.1 to extend the temporary moratorium on processing requests for land use approvals, permits, or licenses in commercial or industrial areas of the city to establish a caregiver grow and cultivation operation under the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. This item was introduced December 6, 2021. Adoption of annual performance resolution between the City of Westland and the Michigan Department of Transportation to construct, operate, and/or use the state highway right-of-way area on roads that are under the state's jurisdiction within the City of Westland. This authorizes the Public Services Director, Neighborhood Services Director, Superintendent of Water, the mayor, and/or the city clerk to apply to MDOT for the necessary permit to work within state highway right-of-way on behalf of the city. Adoption of prepared resolution approving Wayne County Annual Permit A22158, authorizing the City of Westland to apply to the County of Wayne Department of Public Services Engineering Division Permit Office for permits to conduct emergency repairs, annual maintenance work, and for other purposes on local and county roads located entirely within the boundaries of the community as needed from time to time to maintain the roads in a condition reasonably safe and convenient for travel. This authorizes the Public Services Director, Neighborhood Services Director, Superintendent of Water, the mayor, and/or the city clerk to apply to the County of Wayne Department of Public Services Engineering Division Permit Office for the necessary permits to work within county road right-of-way of local roads on behalf of the city. Approval to acquire 2021 tax-for-closed properties from Wayne County, specifically 32611 Manus D, under the final right of refusal for the specified uses, and to sell the redeveloped properties through the Community Development and Economic Development Departments and/or the City Redevelopment Tax Foreclosure Developer Program. This authorizes the Director of Housing and Community Development to sign the purchase agreement and the closing documents for these properties on behalf of the city. Adoption of prepared resolution to call on elected leaders to draft measures to restrict access to firearms amongst minors and on school grounds. Moving to New Business. Item 1. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held December 6, 2021.
Motion by Councilman McDermott, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green. Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business. Item 2. Approval of minutes of the study session held December 6, 2021 at 5:30 p.m.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Godbout. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Upstaying.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business. Item 3. Approval of minutes of the study session held December 6, 2021 at 6:00 p.m.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Upstaying.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business. Item 4. Confirmation of reappointment of John Albrecht to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council for a two-year term, with the term to expire December 31, 2023.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Mayor, did you want to? Sorry, I apologize.
No problem. Through the chair, what I'll do is just say, Items number 4 through 9 are the reappointments of the existing members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council, and I think a couple of them are in the audience, so if you recognize them after you can confirm them, they can stand up.
Very good.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New Business. Item 5. Confirmation of reappointment of Jessica West to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council for a two-year term, with the term to expire December 31, 2023.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New Business. Item 6. Confirmation of reappointment of Julie Slaybaugh to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council for a two-year term, with the term to expire December 31, 2023.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New Business. Item 7. Confirmation of reappointment of LaShawn Hart to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council for a two-year term, with the term to expire December 31, 2023.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Godbout. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? We are not related, I don't believe so, but if you want to invite me over for Christmas dinner, I'm good with that. You never know, the Hart family, it's kind of weird, so. Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New Business. Item 8. Confirmation of reappointment of Chris Galatas to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council for a two-year term, with the term to expire December 31, 2023.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New Business. Item 9. Confirmation of reappointment of Cherie Khan to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council for a two-year term, with the term to expire December 31, 2023.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any, excuse me, any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. If you are called as one of our new Park and Recreation Board confirmees, please stand up and be recognized. Thank you.
New Business. Item 10. Adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the city to apply for a special one-day liquor license from the State of Michigan Liquor Control Commission to sell beer and wine to customers at the annual charity hockey game to be held February 18, 2022, at the Mike Madonna Ice Arena, located at 6210 North Wildwood.
It's a motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Godbout. Mr. Fosson, do you have anything to add?
Council President, this is the standard request that this council's seen over the years as it proceeds with these charity hockey games, so nothing out of the ordinary.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New Business. Item 11. Approval of appointed officials, mayor's office, and city clerk's office pay plan for the period of January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2023.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Londo, is there support? Is there support? Support from Councilman Godbout. Stephanie? Do you have anything to add? Oh, Mayor?
So what you have before you tonight, Council, is a one-page, it's a combined document for the mayor's appointed officials, the mayor's office, and the city clerk, and the deputy clerk's pay plan. This is for a two-year agreement that would start January 1, 2022, and would continue throughout until December 31, 2023. The City Council, we appreciate you coming in. We had about an hour and 20-minute study session on this document before we met here tonight. The plan incorporates similar language from other cities, the city's other collective bargaining agreements. It also makes some addresses to issues arising from the pandemic and rising fuel costs, and in my opinion, it allows City of Westland to remain organizationally competitive. There's only one department head that we're asking to move their level of pay, and that's the Parks and Recreation Director from Level 4 to Level 3A. And as I said in the study session, there were a lot of questions, and we went through all the aspects of this. I think executive pay is always, executive compensation is always hard for any organization, no matter if you're the City of Westland, or you're General Motors, or Ford, or Pepsi. In City of Westland, we've worked our way through all of our labor contracts, and we'll have a fire contract coming to council in January, and I think what you'll see here is what we've been consistent with all of our labor unions, and all of our employee groups, I should say. The salaries, there's a 2% raise in the salaries. It was said 3.5%, but it's 2%, which is in line with what we've done with POAM, lieutenants and sergeants, UAW, AFSCME, and what you'll see shortly for the Fire Department. There are some new allowances in it that kind of rise out of the pandemic. We are asking our department heads to work at City Hall on the road at night, so there is an allowance for cell phones, $100 per month, and we're asking to raise the fuel allowance from 2,000 to 2,500, which will help alleviate some of the rising fuel cost. But at the end of the day, when you look at these packages, I believe that we're competitive, I think it's always hard for an organization like Westland, where the pay for the top official, that would be myself, the executive, is set by the LLC, but all the people that work under me are set by the City Council. So, I think this contract, or this document, allows us to remain competitive. Right now, there's a competitive market for employees. We see it with our police officers, our firefighters, but also with department heads at local government. There's been a huge, there's been a huge retirement all across government levels, but at the local government, it's been hit the hardest, and there's new administrations coming in, some other cities, big cities like Dearborn, Dearborn Heights, Romulus, to name a few, that they're looking to seek new administrations. We've got a great team here, we've got a talented team, we've got a nice mix of experience with youth. There is some allowances in here for continuing education, and I think we've got a wellness allowance as well, and those are the type of things, I guess, we're trying to be creative so we can offer competitive packages without just throwing all the money and salaries. But everything you see here, Council, you've seen in other pay plans, so. so we're asking you to, uh, to move forward on this tonight, and I appreciate your support, and all the department heads, they will too, and there's only a few of them here tonight, but, um, you guys know they work hard every day to keep the city moving forward, they're talented, uh, we have a smaller, um, organization than, than we've had in the past, and with some other communities, so everybody's doing, uh, double duty, and, um, at the end of the day, they kept the city, these are the people that kept the city going during, during the pandemic. Some, some levels of government still aren't open to the public, and in Westland, we've been open to the public, the department heads worked even when we had the, uh, the employees go home, and they didn't receive the hero's pay that our public safety receives, so they do a good job, and, um, council would ask you tonight to move forward on this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Councilwoman Green.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to educate the community in terms of what was discussed during our city council meeting, um, and I want to start by saying that I am pro-employee and pro-fair pay. I'm a small business owner myself, and I know how important it is to offer employees adequate compensation in a way that makes them feel appreciated and valued. Um, some of the discussion during this, um, study session that, um, the majority of the community was not present for was that, um, the majority of the executives under this package already make, um, six figures, well over $105,000. Um, that's just base pay, that's not, um, including any other perks, benefits, the $2,000 car allowance that they receive a month, um, or, or any additional, um, compensation that, once you do the math, towards the end of the year, you, you might see a person who grosses $105,000 for the city actually take home somewhere close to $130-plus thousand dollars by the time the math is all done. Um, but one of the items that concerned me was that the, uh, mayor included a recommendation to allow for a, um, on page eight of the compensation package, allow for, uh, city, his administration and everyone who most, again, majority, um, make six figures right now plus perks, um, to receive a, a continuing education stipend of $2,500 above what they already receive to be paid out the first week in January. I questioned that during the meeting because the city already allocates tens of thousands of dollars for education every year, which includes continuing education, it includes anyone, um, who's going for a master's or bachelor's degree, um, or just a class to keep you sharp in your area of expertise. There's already dollars already allocated for that, the City of Westland or taxpayers have already paid to put multiple city employees through college, um, some, uh, who did receive a master's or a bachelor's degree, uh, which is not a bad thing, um, but I say that to say, we already have money allocated for that, and historically, the majority of the money that we set aside in these budgets do not get used, so that means that the employees were not taking advantage of the thousands of dollars that we have left over every year. And in my opinion, to set aside a $2,500 check that goes out the first, uh, pay period in January to all of these employees is a bonus under the guise of a stipend or, um, a continuing education, um, whatever you want to call it. And, and, and I also question why we would put that forward when we already are paying for their education. Uh, there was, um, I also questioned the $100 per month additional, uh, cellphone stipend, uh, because there are multiple cellphone providers currently, um, who are offering free, brand-new, uh, uh, Apple, what is that, the, the iPhone, brand-new iPhones for free with unlimited everything for $14, or, uh, excuse me, for, less than $49 a month, uh, with a brand-new phone at no cost. The city would, is essentially a business account. When I questioned Steve Smith, who's the head of our finances in the city, I asked him specifically about the due diligence that was done, um, did he contact Sprint, Apple, Verizon to compare whether or not giving our employees an extra $1,200 each a month when they're going to carry a personal cellphone anyway, but we could have possibly, uh, saved the city money by issuing these phones that would be insured in the event that the phone be, malfunctions for whatever, uh, reason. It would, it could potentially cost the city less money to do it under our existing business account. During that meeting, Steve Smith was unable to, um, confirm who our cellphone provider was, he was unable to prefer, uh, confirm, uh, which city employee that we are currently paying more than $100 a month for their existing cellphone line, and he encouraged me to send, uh, the mayor an email, uh, to which they would respond at their convenience to, um, give me, uh, the information relative to whether or not this is even a smart recommendation for us to give, uh, these employees $1,200 a month. That's, and I also questioned the health and wellness, um, addition of $1,200 per employee as well. We already pay full benefits for, uh, city employees, we pay that for retirees as well. They want to offer, in addition to a six-figure salary, edge of, uh, tuition reimbursement, um, uh, car, uh, allowances, uh, excellent benefits packages, uh, et cetera, et cetera, more paid holidays than what the state of Michigan recognizes as a paid holiday. Westland pays out more paid holidays than our state recognizes, and they now want to offer, um, an additional $1,200 as a health and wellness, which is an incentive to encourage, uh, employ, city employees, which, whom are all, uh, adults, uh, we would assume responsible adults, to go to the doctor regularly. Um, now, it, my, my, uh, feedback during the city council study session was, if this were for profit, and you heard the mayor mention General Motors and whomever, that's because I mentioned it during the, the study session, if this were General Motors, or Ford Motor Company, or, uh, Verizon, or Google, or anyone who is making their own profit, and they wanted to offer additional perks, that is excellent from a private sector standpoint. This is a public sector, taxpayer-funded municipality, so we as taxpayers are going to incentivize at a cost of $1,200 a month, or, excuse me, per year, to encourage our employees to go to the doctor, and we're already paying for their medical, we're going to give them $2,500 for taking continuing education classes that we already pay for. So on top of paying for their education, we're going to turn around and pay them $2,500 for going to school, when the money is already there. There was discussion during the, uh, study session, uh, in, in terms of, uh, with discussion with some of the city council members was to change the verbiage to say if they attend one, uh, or any one random continuing education class, they still get $2,500. So basically what that means for those of you who don't know, you, you're not in the government sector, and you may not understand the small print, if a city employee who, again, gets the type of compensation, which is really, uh, Westland has excellent packages, we are very competitive, if they go online and sign up for an ethics course, ethics course is anyone who's familiar with ethics courses, ethics courses, uh, apply to every, uh, position. So if someone signs up for a $15 ethics course and takes one or two hours out of their day, they will be eligible for a $2,500 check, and as long as they give our human resources director proof that they're going to take one class, they can get a check for $2,500 on top of their compensation. So that was troubling to, to, um, to me, um, and was discussed as well. Another, um, uh, concern that I have relative to the already handsome, uh, packages that we offer in the city is that the current package states that if city employees don't use their paid vacation annually, which sometimes you can if things come up, um, they are eligible currently today to be paid up to five weeks of their, um, pay. So that's 25 business days, that's a, that, that's more vacation than a lot of employees get in other sectors, they are eligible for five weeks. The city now wants to uncap that, so if they bank up to two or three months' worth of unpaid vacation, um, the taxpayer will pay that out, um, and, and I don't agree with, I think five weeks is of, of unpaid vacation on top of what, uh, we already see as city employees is more than, um, competitive. Uh, there was discussion relative to salaries of, um, and I assume that one councilman may or may not discuss his concern with a, a salary of someone that we discussed during the, the, um, the, the study session, but our Parks and Recs, Director, uh, was hired two years ago at $40,000 per year. He is now going to receive no less than a 68% increase with this new, um, new pay scale. Um, when he was hired in, we also created a position for a facilities director that Westland did not have at that time. That facilities director was bought on roughly a year ago, within that year, he received a, uh, 60% increase, he went from $65,000 a year to, he currently makes $105,000 a year as the, uh, uh, Parks and Recs Director, and again, that's base, that is not any other benefit that, that they receive. He received a 60% increase in one year, um, and the mayor explained it to city council when he requested that increase, um, it was allegedly supposed to be due to him picking up responsibilities for the Parks and Rec Director. Well, now, this man received a $40,000 increase last year and a 60% increase, and the Parks and Rec Director will receive no less, almost 70% higher than what he, uh, was bought in and hired during the city, and so, um, there's numerous concerns that, um, you know, I raised during the study session, and I'm only one of seven votes. Uh, my background is business and budgeting, um, and I am very pro-employee, and I have fought for many of these city employees, I have fought for many city contracts, uh, from police and fire, and even our union workers, and so in terms of pay, I am very pro-fair pay, but I believe the City of Westland is very, is, we are extremely competitive. We also pay most of our executives more money than some of our larger-ing neighbors, neighboring cities in the metro area, we pay more than these cities who bring in, uh, more tax dollars than the City of Westland has, so it's not a, um, a circumstance of whether or not they should be paid fairly, they absolutely should, they deserve the six-figure salaries and the car allowances, and the tuition reimbursements, and the medical, and the this, that, and the other that they're getting, but when you want to give them $1,200 to go to the doctor, when we're already paying for them to go to the doctor as taxpayers, and you want to give them $1,200 a year to carry a cellphone that they're going to carry anyway, when we may have been able to get it cheaper through our business account had we done the, the, uh, adequate research, and then you want to write up a recommendation to give them 12, uh, excuse me, 2,500 additional dollars for going to school when we already pay for them to go to school, there are several sections in our budgets that are, that are alloc, the city budget that is allocated for education, it is up to the employee to take advantage of that. The way this was written was to just give it to them, and, uh, city council, some, the, the city attorney, uh, made a, um, recommendation that we change the verbiage, but the way the verbiage would be changed would still entitle them to the full $2,500 January 1st if they just take one class, and the classes not have the total $2,500. Again, it could be as small as an online ethics course, or one, um, continuing education class, uh, for two hours, um, either online or at the local college, and from a taxpayer standpoint, and an elected official, I don't believe that as elected officials, we should be incentivizing ourselves to the point to where it becomes less a case of competitive salary packages and more an issue of what one might, may consider to be a cash grab because nobody is watching, or we don't answer to anyone, um, the, uh, the other, other than city council, once we say yes, they pretty much do whatever they want to do. Um, so I just wanted to clarify before the vote goes forward because that is one of the things that I have done in my four years, if I was not able to support something that I actually did, was in support of, either on a partial or, um, uh, majority level, um, I would explain my no, and since the things that I have brought to the table, um, more than likely will not be, uh, changed, um, in a manner that I believe is business smart, and I do not believe that if this were a private sector, that, um, many of these decisions would just be, uh, done in the manner that they are, but again, if this were a private sector, it is the, it, it, it is the, um, just at the discretion of the CEO to decide what he would like to do with his money, this is taxpayers' dollars, and I take that seriously, and for that, those reasons, I support every city employee, and I'm very grateful for the job that they've done, I believe that, again, with these type of packages that they already receive, um, well into the six figures, uh, I believe that they, they, we are very competitive in our city, uh, but I can't support, uh, many of these recommendations, um, that have went forward, uh, during our study session, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Godbout.
Thanks. Over the years, I've been, uh, critical, but I've been consistent in regards to, uh, some of our, our salaries, and in particular in regards to the, the clerks and the deputy clerk's salary. Uh, usually I bring it up during budget time, and by that point in time, it's already, uh, in stone because the, uh, pay plan's been approved. In looking at the, all of the, uh, salaries for all of the various departments, whether it be the budget director, the facilities director, MIS director, uh, the, the DPS Finance Director, we're, we're competitive with communities around us, we're, we're very competitive with our local communities. The areas where we're not competitive, where we're gen, very generous, uh, fall within the clerk's and the deputy clerk's office, and that's occurred over the course of several years. The, uh, the LOCC, which sets the salaries for the mayor's office, the clerk's office, and the city council, has not met since 2015, because at that point in time, it was changed so that it escalated and was tied barred to, uh, the, I believe it was the police chief's salary, uh, I may be mistaken, but, uh, regardless, uh, those, those continue to go up year after year without a review from the LOCC, so one, I'd like to see the LOCC, uh, be reformed, and as our, uh, ordinance calls for, to review the salaries for the mayor, uh, and the, uh, clerk, and the city council, uh, for, in the next cycle, which would be, uh, in, uh, 2023, because based off of the ordinance, they meet in the odd year, uh, of the, uh, every two years on the odd number year. Don't ask me why, that's just the way it's written in the ordinance. But over the course of time, when you look at the, the salaries and, uh, the, uh, and we don't set, I mean, the, the LOCC does not set the deputy clerk's salary, uh, and this is no reflection on our, our deputy clerk's job performance or anything else other than the fact that we are, the council does set the salaries for that position, and currently, we are significantly higher than most other communities for that salary, and since it, I can't address it at the budget time, I need to address it during this point in time, so if there's support, and I'll, I'll go into a further explanation, and what those dollars reflect, I'd like to make the recommendation that the deputy clerk's, uh, salary be moved to a pay grade three. And if there's support.
Is that a motion, Councilman Godbout?
It's a motion.
There's a motion on the table to move the deputy clerk to pay grade three. Is there support?
I'll support it for discussion.
Support it for discussion, Councilman Hersberg. Is there a discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Godbout.
Sure. So just as a point of reference, our city clerks, or our deputy city clerk's salary is set as 106,000 per year. The pay grade three, which is not listed on here, would take it because it's 20%, or it's 10%, 90% of the pay grade two salary, which if my math is correct, would move it to $95,662. As a point of reference, the, for their city clerks, the city of Dearborn pays 97,910 for their city clerk, and the city of Livonia pays 89,994. So that would set our deputy clerk's salary in between what the city of Livonia and the city of Dearborn pay for their city clerk. So that's the reason that I'm making the recommend. It still is way more generous than what other municipalities around us are paying for a deputy clerk's position. And I'd also like to see that the LOCC meets in two years to relook at where the other elected officials' salary ranges are. Our mayor's salary falls right where it should as when you compare it to Dearborn, Livonia, which are larger municipalities surrounding us, and we're third in that range for the mayor's salary. We're the third largest that reports in through Wayne County to the MML. And, you know, I encouraged my colleagues during the study session to look at the MML website. They can have access to the wage and salary survey that gets conducted annually. So that's my recommendation, and that's why I made the motion to move that salary to a level three.
Is there any other discussion? Councilwoman Green?
Thank you. Through the chair to Councilman Godbout. Can you confirm, and I apologize because I believe you stated it, the pay level three puts her at what?
It would put it at $95,662. It's 10%, it's 90% of grade two, as defined in section 1A, item 1, on the pay plan that's before us. It sets the grade level three. Maximum wage shall be 90% of the grade two maximum wage.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And I just wanted to add to my question, my recollection, when the deputy clerk was bought on, she did not have experience in that area whatsoever, any experience as a, to do that. She just didn't have previous experience. And I believe we paid her almost $80,000 when she was sat with no previous experience. When she was sat in the seat, it was like $79,000. And within a six-month period or something like that, she was escalated from 79 to 92,000 just because she had the title deputy clerk. And I, it was less than a year, I know that, so six months, don't quote me, but it was definitely less than, it was a 12-month, there was no more than a 12-month period that she went from 79,000 roughly, and it could have been more than that, to 92,000. And I raised a question at that time because of her lack of experience. And when I say lack of experience, there was no professional executive experience for that seat. And I was extremely concerned because that was the secondary executive seat that controlled all of our electoral process here in the city of Westland. But even with that being said, I think that the compensation that she is receiving, in addition to the fact that there were other city employees who were very disgruntled, that was brought to my attention because they didn't even have the opportunity to apply for that position. It was given to the deputy clerk, who, again, was not, she had no previous experience. I think a salary of $92,000 for the last year is more than fair. There are things that Councilman Godbout and myself don't always agree with, but a $95,000 per year salary with a car allowance and, again, all the other perks that I mentioned previously is extremely handsome when you consider that this person, from an employment standpoint, was, had no qualifications relative to that position. And I'll just say that. And so with that being said, that's roughly $100,000 when you consider all these other perks. The city council more than likely is slated to give this administration. She more than likely will be back at the six-figure range anyway. I would, I plan to support Councilman Godbout's recommendation. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you. I'd like to weigh in on this conversation, and I appreciate, Councilman Godbout, you mentioned that in your opinion, you thought the mayor's pay was in line with other communities. But I just have to tell you, city council, is that this just does not feel right. This is not how we've done business in the past. The time, if, Councilman Godbout and I are personal friends, so he may not like this, but the time to adjust the salary for this position was when the position was vacant. The position was filled, and the consensus of council was to pay it at that, at that level. And if pay plans had been passed since then, since the deputy clerk was hired, that was done by consensus. I cannot remember once in my 20 years' experience in Westland where we've cut an employee's pay, regardless if it was at an executive level or people working as crossing guards for the city of Westland or driving Zambonis. We have never cut an employee's pay. And to say that this person did not have experience for the position, it's not an executive position. It's a clerical position with supervisory, and this person was clerical for the city of Westland. She did an outstanding job. She's a Westland resident, and she's done nothing but excelled since we put her in that position. Since she's been in that position, she has worked tirelessly to help deliver the presidential election in the middle of a pandemic and the last local election during the pandemic. So she's in the audience, and I got to think that she's probably feeling pretty uncomfortable watching her employers talk about her job performance and her experience after what she's helped do. So in my opinion, if we think these are out of line, and when you look at comparisons, they are out of line, but the time to address that is when these are vacant positions or through attrition. That's the way you do it because I think it sets a dangerous precedent, and it just doesn't feel right. That's not the way that we've done business in the city of Westland in the past. It's not how we've treated our employees, and I don't think it's how we should start tonight. And she doesn't even work for me.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Mayor, thank you. Before you spoke, I thought of one time that, in recent memory anyway, that pay was adjusted downward for a position. It was two years ago. The position your appointee was vacant at that time. It was a reasonable request of the council. The council approved it. I've been around a long time, been involved in government since 1988, seen a lot of things. But I'll tell you one thing I've only seen twice, twice, in over 30 years, is negotiating an agreement involving employees in the public forum, twice, both by the same individual, both at this very lectern. Once, it involved the city clerk, and once today, it involves the deputy city clerk. I think it's totally inappropriate. I think that the mayor's comments should be considered when you evaluate how you may choose to vote on this. I tell you, if we were in a different setting, it'd be called bargaining at bad faith. That's what it is. That's exactly what it is. And I'm asking the city council to not support this item, to move forward with the plan, to adopt it, and at a point when the conversation is more relevant, specifically as the mayor mentions. When one or both of us is gone, do whatever you like. But I find this very distasteful, very distasteful. I think it's disgusting, and I think it's in poor form. Thank you.
So I see the two lights on. Are there any other discussions from another council member who hasn't spoken yet? Councilman Hersberg.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. Just real briefly, not only on this amendment, but the whole thing. I mean, it was mentioned that we're doing this in the public forum. We had our study session right before this meeting, and we basically ran out of time. And in prior years, we were told that we were not going to have study sessions the same day as a vote anymore, but the status quo has remained the same. So there's a lot of things I'd like to change in this. Could take quite a while if we do it here. If we can't get agreement, I may just vote no on the whole thing. But again, you know, we got into that study session, every single council member had comments and suggested changes, and there just wasn't time to do it. So I'll come back later. Thank you.
Councilman Godbout.
Thanks. Yeah, it's not an easy topic. When I did bring it up, when the position was vacant, when we were filling that position, the pay plan was already in effect. So, again, we couldn't alter that pay plan because it was already in effect. There was no desire on the council's part, or a majority of the council, to move it forward. During our study session, the city attorney reminded us, we couldn't make any decisions during that deliberation process for the, for this agenda item in the study session, which is why I had to bring this out during the city council meeting versus having this discussion back when we were in the study session. So, yep, you know, I've been consistent on it, and I'll remain consistent on it. I couldn't, we talked about it during the budget session. I put all the numbers out there back during the budget sessions. And again, there's no other alternative other than to continue down this same path. And in this case, now it's going to be for the next two years, or until that position opens up again. So I'm, you know, I'll agree to disagree with some of my colleagues on that. Thanks.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify some of the statements that were made. During our presidential election, the deputy clerk who was in the position who resigned, she actually helped facilitate that election. So it was not just Clerk LeBlanc, and the new deputy, Sue, actually worked that election for the city of Westland. And I actually saw her and spoke to her while she was here working that election because the new deputy clerk was brand-new, and she did not have any previous experience. As Councilwoman Hersberg stated, we wanted to deliberate this position more and were encouraged not to because it was not a, whatever the city attorney said about a public meeting, we needed to do it there. This is a public meeting, and while, this is our public meeting, and while it may not sit well with some individuals, it is not meant to be an attack. It is a discussion because city council is the body that is supposed to make this decision. So if it is not us having this discussion, then no one would. This is exactly what we, the discussion that city council needs to make. Now, relative to the conversation about her, the experience, I think that, you know, there's just, there are attempts by certain people to pull at the heartstrings of the public when we are talking business here. The truth of the matter is, which came out during our city council meeting, when this discussion was, when this seat was discussed in detail, it was discussed that other city employees were interested in this position, and they were not given the opportunity to apply. It was given to the deputy clerk, whose previous experience included working at a daycare, a nanny, and an at-home mom, being an at-home mom, which are very wonderful jobs in society, but they are not directly relative to being a deputy clerk, the second person in charge of our electoral process in the city of Westland. Now, whether or not you would consider that to be an executive position, I would consider a deputy clerk to be an executive seat. The deputy clerk had minute clerical experience working here in administrative assistant capacities in our accounts payable department. But again, relative to experience of being a deputy clerk, there was none at that time, and that is not an attack, that is not anti-woman. It actually was very unfortunate for the employees who, several of them came to me and felt that they were more qualified and were never even given the opportunity to apply for the job. So when Councilman, I was not here when Councilman Godbout has raised this issue year over year because he's been here for almost 20 years. So that is not something that I can speak to. But I will state that going from 79,000, almost $80,000 for a position that you, by most employment standards, were not qualified to do, but you have excelled wonderfully, and to go from 80,000 to over 90,000 and now to cap at 95,000 plus, almost another $5,000 in just perks, not counting benefits or anything else, I think that is very fair, in addition to the fact that he did state that these other cities that are larger than us, we pay more for that position. And also, there are several cities that are larger than Westland that we pay more for our positions here. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I'm saying they're already getting 2% more, plus the rest of these things, that in my opinion, from a business standpoint, do not make good financial sense, being that this is taxpayer-funded. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Councilman Londo?
Yeah, I just moved to call the question to vote on this motion, please.
Motion to call a question. Is there support?
Support.
Councilwoman Green, is that your support?
Yes.
Supported by Councilwoman Green. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Godbout?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo?
No.
We're calling the question.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
It's your motion.
Yeah.
Councilman McDermott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski?
Yes.
President Harte?
Yeah.
Motion to close the question is unanimously approved.
Roll call.
Moving to new business, item 11, I'm sorry, the amendment.
Correct.
Moving to the amendment as proposed to move the deputy clerk down a pay grade. Councilman Godbout?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo?
No.
Councilman McDermott?
No.
Councilwoman Rakowski?
No.
President Harte?
No.
Motion fails. Moving to the item itself.
Moving back to the underlying motion. Is there any other discussion? Councilman McDermott? This is the original motion, Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Okay.
So, page eight, item B, you know, again, I do, the word stipend is in there, but I think that this is a bonus, and I think we should be calling it what it is for, for one. And two, you know, we talked about some language that we want to potentially amend this to. In terms of the word, it says, "The city shall provide an annual continuing education stipend in the amount of," I think adding language "up to" instead of "of" is more appropriate for that section. And, you know, really, it just seems to me to be a bit duplicitous when you consider the fact that we have already the education bonus that's being the fact that we have already the education bonus that's being offered, and then we're, regardless of the cost of that program, whatever program a department head takes, it's going to be a $2,500 bonus. You know, this isn't going to sink the whole thing for me by any means, but I will say that when we're already offering education reimbursement, and on top of that, we're just giving out a blanket, you know, potentially $2,500, and not tying it to a specific program to say, okay, your program costs X, so that's what you should be paid, I, you know, I know we talked about some language in changing item B, but I'd be in favor of stricken it altogether. But I'll let somebody else make an amendment in terms of the language change that we're looking for in item B, page eight.
So for clarification, Councilman, you're not making a moment, a motion?
I am not making a motion.
Okay. I just wanted some clarification. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? It's not blinking, I assure you. Your mic's on. Go ahead.
Is it on now?
Yep.
Yeah, thanks. As I mentioned previously, I'm going to support the pay plan as it exists because obviously my colleagues feel that it's not the time to make that change. I don't know when the time to make that change is. The rest of the benefits and salaries are competitive with surrounding communities and with other communities throughout the state. And I don't feel that voting against throwing the baby out with the bathwater is not the right solution. So I will be supporting the overall pay plan. I'm disappointed that we didn't address a, an item that's been out there for several years, but, you know, so be it. My, you know, it's the majority of the council that makes those decisions, so, thanks.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Councilman Hersberg.
Yeah, I'll just try to be real fast here. Regarding Councilman McDermott's comments, I would support that motion if you were to make it. That's one of the things that I was looking at here. And then just going back to the last conversation we were having, that was regarding an appointed position, not a regular employee. Another issue I do have with this is that it's a two-year term. I would like it to be a one-year term, as it's always been in the past, and I will make a motion that we amend it to expire December 31st, 2022.
There's a motion to turn it into a one-year term, paraphrasing if that's all right with you, Councilman Hersberg.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Green. Discussion. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
No.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo.
No.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
No.
President Hart.
No.
Motion fails.
Back to the underlying motion, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So when your mic stays on, it doesn't flash, so that's why I have to turn it back on. So there you are, Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. I will not be in support of this. You know, I do respect the majority of council's decision, the way everybody votes, but it does seem that we needed to have more conversation on this, and that just wasn't able to happen this year, so I will not be in support.
I'm just going to clear mics right now so I don't get any more. Is there any discussion? I think everybody's already spoken twice. All right. Do you have discussion, Councilman?
Yes, I do.
Council McDermott, there, your microphone is on.
I'd like to make an amendment to item B on there, page eight, item B, that we had talked about in the study session, changing the language on that. So currently, it reads, "The city shall provide an annual continuing education stipend in the amount of $2,500 to be paid in the first of January." And then we want to add on to that, instead of the period after January, we want to add comma, "upon proof of a..."
Continuing education relevant to the job.
Yes, "upon proof of a continuing education relevant to the job approved by personnel." Period.
There's a motion for the added verbiage. Is there support? Is there support? Is there support? Support by Councilwoman Rakowski. Discussion. Councilman Hersberg.
Yes, thank you. I will not be in support of this motion. To my understanding, it will not change the dollar amount that will be received by employees. Thank you.
Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. I also, as I previously stated, even with Councilman McDermott's motion, this still gives these employees, the city employees, taxpayers are basically still on the hook for $2,500 the first weekend of January if they take one $15 class or a one-hour continuing ed. class. The statement of "up to" was discussed during the city study, the study session that we just came out of, and it basically means if they go and get a class and present it to the HR director, she can say, yep, I got your class, you're all set for the $2,500, and the class could cost $60. And so I think that motion is very poor as it relates to a present, a public presentation of attempting to curb what is essentially a $2,500 bonus when, when the councilman stated from his own commentary that he believes it is a bonus as well. So the motion actually would still entitle them to that, and for that reason, I will not be in support. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
This is on changing the, the original verbiage in the contract.
Amending item B.
Item B.
Yes.
For this education.
No.
Councilwoman Green.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Pro Tem Londo.
No.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
No.
Motion fails. Back to the underlying motion, and I don't think there's anybody who hasn't spoken twice. I really don't think so. So, except for Councilman Londo. So let me hold on, let me turn all this off. Please bear with me. Council McDermott.
I'm going to make an amendment to remove item B from the item B, page eight. The language that says, "The city shall provide an annual continuing education stipend in the amount of $2,500 to be paid the first, to be paid, the first pay in January.
There's a motion to strike item B. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Hersberg. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
No.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo.
No.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
No.
President Hart.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay. I think I can go straight to roll call on this because I don't have any discussion, so...
Councilman Godbout.
This is on the...
The main motion.
The main motion.
Yes. Councilwoman Green.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
No.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item 11, I'm sorry, item 12, approval of preliminary phase PUD development plan for an attached condominium development, 33065 Ann Arbor Trail, south side of Ann Arbor Trail, east of Farmington. This is planning department number 2255, and I'm told that there may be a document that indicates it's final, but this is preliminary.
So move.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mo.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, City Council. In the, well, in this old agenda, it said a final plan, but this is indeed preliminary plan, just heads up on that. So this subject site on your screen outlined in purple is on the south side of Ann Arbor Trail, just east of Farmington. Up here to your top left is where that island exists, where Joy, Farmington, Hines, and another street intersect. The overall site comprises of about one acre and contains a single-family home over on the bottom right-hand side of the property. Can't see it because of the trees. The property is currently zoned R2, single-family residential. The petitioner proposes a PUD designation in order to construct a condominium development. The condominium development will contain six total units. It will include two separate buildings, housing three units each, for the total of six. If approved, the existing dwelling that I mentioned earlier will be demolished. There are several other structures, miscellaneous structures on the site as well that will be removed, along with trees, with a tree permit that must accompany that. Adjacent properties are all zoned, single-family residential. This development here to the bottom of the screen is Arbor Oaks Condominium, and that is zoned SPD. But as I mentioned, everything else is zoned residential, and you have Nakin Mills, the Wayne County property here to the northwest. This is what the site plan looks like. I'll pause here for a second. There's two different unit types are proposed. One is a two-bedroom unit with a floor area of just over 1,200 square feet, and the other is a three-bedroom unit with a floor area of just over 1,600 square feet. This is a ranch-style development, approximately 20 feet in height. Each unit will include a single or double driveway, depending on the unit type, plus a one-car garage. The condominium development, I'll zoom in on this, will contain one ingress and one egress drive that is connected via a one-way drive within the condominium development that will provide access to each individual driveway and unit. Development of the site will include landscaping along the Ann Arbor Trail right-of-way and throughout the condominium development itself, and the petitioner will be required to comply with the county stormwater detention ordinance, and there is a detention pond proposed at the southwest side of the property over here. There's some site design stats in your backup. The planning commission held a public hearing on this earlier this month and is recommending approval to the city council. There were various residents who came out from the Arbor Oaks condominium development, voiced some minor concerns about their property and also about some overgrown vegetation and dead trees and some potential sidewalk connections here. And the developer, and I, and the residents are all going to work together to accommodate, I believe, most of their requests, which were very minor. This is preliminary plan. This will be coming back to you in January for a more detailed description, but this is what essentially it is going to look like. Final plan will include more engineering work of the site. This is rendering, again, what the unit, what those two buildings are going to look like. This is an exact replica of what's going on on that island I mentioned earlier at Farmington. This is a project that's being done by Suave Homes, who is also the petitioner here tonight. I'm sorry, Infinity Homes, owned by Reno Suave, who's in the audience today. So this is the one that's going on at Farmington, and this is, this concept is being copied for this property over here. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. The petitioners in the audience, you have anything you wanted to add? It's optional, we won't, if you don't want to. Okay, very good. I'll go ahead and open up discussion to the councils. Are any discussion from the maker or supporter? Any discussion from the council? I have Councilman McDermott.
Well, thank you for coming to council, and I appreciate that. Just in regards to the site plan, I noticed on some of our other, you know, communities, both communities that you're, you guys have built here in the city of Westland and that other developers have done. When you look at the site plan, it looks like there are trees or some kind of burn off back towards the houses themselves, but in terms of what is street frontage, right up in front of the road, there's no trees or anything that's, you know, accounted for there. A lot of times when you look at like easements in a traditional subdivision, not a condominium complex, but a traditional single-family home subdivision, you see trees up at the street front. Is that something that you're willing to offer, either put in yourselves or willing to offer the potential buyers of the property to put in?
Can I ask you to come to the lectern?
Council President, can I address that really quickly?
Sure.
Before the petitioner speaks. So during the preliminary phase, the landscaping compliance was, was not a requirement. In final phase, it is, and the petitioner has been working towards final phase drawings. This one that's on your screen is one of those drawings. I just thought it would be appropriate to include it as part of the presentation today that's not in your backup. So it does show landscaping on here. This will, again, show up in your final phase drawing. So there is landscaping and trees and a berm included along the Ann Arbor Trail right-of-way. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you, Mo. Thank you.
Thank you. I brought you up here for nothing, but wait, just yet. Hold on. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
New business, item 13, approval of voucher.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Godbout. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. All right. We will now move to public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the question person, excuse me, the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. Before I begin, I'm going to hand the gavel to the pro tem. I do need to use the restroom and get some water. I apologize. So, Mr. Pro Tem, please.
Thanks, President Hart. We'll start off on the left-hand side. Anyone wishing to speak tonight? Anyone on the right side wishing to speak tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Craig, can you help me with the clock since I don't have the... Thanks.
My name's Lisa Graham from Westland. I just plan to come and say goodbye to Tasha and wish everybody a Merry Christmas. However, I would just like to remind everybody that it is never poor form or disgusting to discuss matters in the public about those that impact the public, especially the taxpayers. And, boy, you guys love to spend our money. If you're going to compare us to Dearborn, Mayor, then when are you going to start providing the services that the residents get in Dearborn? Let's just take a look at what Dearborn receives. In Dearborn, you can still have your leafs taken out to the curb. You take them out, the city picks them up for you. They have a special needs registry. They have three libraries, five pools, at least, three splash pads. They have a beautiful performing arts center. They have Camp Dearborn, which is a 626 recreational retreat, and seniors are admitted free. They have a welcome center. They have a lot of things to offer residents that Westland does not offer. So if you're going to pretend that the people in Westland deserve to be paid on the same scale as a city that offers the residents way more, then I'm going to call you on it. It's unethical, it's unfair, and it's time that you started paying attention to the residents and the taxpayers. That's all we're asking for is transparency, and by you guys trying to slide this under the, you know, you're objecting because we're discussing stuff in public? That's ridiculous. And just because things are done differently is not bad, and it shouldn't be called out. That's why Westland's in the mess that it is, because nobody is anything different, and you're threatened by it. So it's good to be in Westland. If it's good to be in Westland and people deserve to get higher pay, then pay them. But they do not deserve to earn our money, our hard-earned money in taxes if we aren't going to reap the benefits as well. So stop padding their wallets and start taking care of the residents.
Anyone on the left wishing to speak tonight? Yes, ma'am.
I am Councilwoman-elect Melissa Sampee. I'd like to wish everyone here tonight Merry Christmas and to the residents at home also a lovely holiday. I was recently present at a few ribbon cuttings. There is a lot of great things going on in the city. It's great to see new businesses coming to the city, so I wanted to congratulate Hometown Pets, located off of Newburgh in Marquette. I brought my dog out there. She loved it. It was a fabulous event. Also, 313 Brazilian Juizito, and I always say it wrong, West. They're located off Ford Road. They're a new business who invested in the city, and it was really great to see new faces out there, new residents that were interested in trying something new for their children. And speaking of congratulations, I wanted to congratulate Westland Police and Fire. You guys have been so active this holiday season, and the shop for the Hero event seemed like it went really well. I saw pictures. I was kind of jealous. I wanted to go out there as well. I know it was a partnership with Wayne Wesleyan Schools, so I saw a lot of smiling faces, and I wanted to congratulate you. Also, I know that you guys, the Westland Police with Westland Goodfellows, did a great event, too. So, I was out there and donated, and it was, it was absolutely fabulous. Councilwoman Rakowski is not here, but I wanted to thank her. She brought a resolution tonight to stake, to actually take a stand on school violence. I'm a mom to an high schooler, and actually, I'm going to try not to tear up, but this actually personally affected my family. My son was actually friends with some of the Oxford School, Oxford School students. So last night I was talking to his friend. His friend was in the bathroom with one of the students that was killed, and it's absolutely devastating as a mom to, to have your, your 14-year-old son say he doesn't want to even go to school. Those students actually are not expected to be back in the school until late January, February, and from lockdown to lockdown, I am so sick of seeing our children live in fear. I'm sick to my stomach. My 14-year-old is absolutely nervous and texts me in school and says, "Mom, I hope I see you at home." Mental health is real, and bullying is real, and we need to remember our children are often the forgotten ones. So, again, I would like to applaud her for bringing that and moving that forward because I think it was a very public stance, and I appreciate that. So with that said, I look forward to seeing everyone on January 3, 2020. It will be my first meeting as a councilwoman. Congratulations, Ms. Green, too, for all that you did for the past four years. I appreciate it. And be safe and stay well and be kind to each other. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will pass the gavel back to Council President Hurt, and we're on the radio now.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone on my right? Sir.
Hey, everybody. I just thought I wanted to stop by. I wanted to thank Councilwoman Green for her support. I would like to come up here and say thank people for, who have listened to me, who hasn't. Life's been really good. Work at Wayne State, I'm a governor, and intersexuality has become a skill set, and I think me being able to live in this atmosphere, to be able to understand the word of intersexuality as a person with disability, has really been a really big, a really big accomplishment. I remember meeting with Richard Bob back a long time ago. You know, they said, "You should start a meeting up with your state rep." So, okay, I'm going to do this. So I got on the phone, and I said, "I'll call Richard's office and talk to Jay." And like, "Can we meet? I want to talk to you about this bill I'm going to pass." So it's like, "Sure, where you going to meet him?" I said, "Pandora, like ice coffee." So we went there and sat there. I was nervous, and it was like, like, "Where was he? Where was he?" And they're like, "Oh, he's right there." So me and my old private staff, it was just, it was just amazing. So, the experience here has really made me grow, people who, you know, I have supported and not supported, but this is just a moment. I'm growing, smiling, and so I just want to say, I appreciate it, and I will be around. I will be stronger in Wayne County, intersexuality, guardianship, so you'll see me. You probably won't see me as political. I have made a clear statement over my appointment to the Michigan League of Customs from not to be political for the next four years, so it's going to be a good challenge, and I appreciate everything that you guys have done. So I just want to congratulate Mayor Baldwin for reelection. Want to congratulate Tasha for being strong. Want to congratulate James for just being a strong guy. Mike, you're a good colleague. We work together good on Youth Commission. Godbout, you're cool. And Mike, you have, I've known you for a real long time, and it's like to see you there and see me here, touch a bone. Jeff, officers, it's really going to be a, going to really miss talk my policy issues with you, but I'm pretty sure you know some people in Dearborn Heights, so let them know. And Furd Chief, never met you, I've seen you people, but thank you for what you do. Y'all have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody on my left? Anyone else on my right? Sir.
My name is Richard Schneider from 38720 Bellevue Street. I wanted to comment on the Bellevue Gray Street development meeting last Monday. I thought the meeting was supposed to be between the developer, Joe Eta, and the residents of the Grace Bellevue Street. Apparently, Joe didn't want to answer questions, so the Joe Show was off-limits. Mo stepped in and answered one question, and that was the development was rated R1, zoned R1. He failed to answer any of the city ordinance questions, only repeatedly it was zoned R1. So the Mo Show wasn't very impressive either. I was a little upset we didn't get to finish our discussions due to the 60-minute timeframe that only Mo knew about. After discussions were over, the only thing that I understood was that the city is backing the developer, and no matter what the residents of Grace Bellevue said, it didn't matter. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience? Sir.
Good evening. Ben Bosh of 8426 Grace. I was also at the public meeting last Monday. I just wanted to, I thank some of you privately, and I want to thank all of you personally that were able to attend. Clerk LeBlanc, Deputy Mayor Reed was there, I believe, and I just want to thank everybody for coming and taking the time to get the information from the residents in a longer-form setting that's not, you know, limited to three minutes and whatnot, and that's all. I just thank you all for having the time for us.
Anyone else in the audience? I have a clo, sir.
I would like to request more than three minutes. Can you grant it?
No, you, you and I have talked about what our accommodations are, and that's what we're going to do.
Okay. But Mike Liddell granted someone more than three minutes, and not one city council member up there objected to the person to have longer time. But when I come up, I'm denied. Okay? So I don't understand why city council will pass pay budgets or, you know, giving someone more money than Mr. Godbout said. The city clerk, not the deputy clerk, but the city clerk of Livonia, and I can't remember what other city you said, makes less money than our deputy clerk would make. But you guys just make it rain, don't you? You guys should be real proud of yourself, just spending that money and don't care. Mr. Godbout pointed it out to you, and you guys still ignored the facts. Those are facts. Shameful, shameful. And then, as you notice, where's the directors? Most of them left already. But we're giving them all these nice bonuses and pay raises. Where are they? Don't they care about the citizens? Apparently not, because this is when the citizens can come up and speak. I would like to know, you know, like Vic Barr parked in handicap. Did he get a ticket? Did he get discipline for it? He didn't have handicaps, a placard, he didn't have a handicap license plates, but he parked in handicap. I got pictures. Was he disciplined for that? Mayor, do you know if he was disciplined?
I talked to him after you brought him in.
Was he disciplined? Was it put in his personnel file?
I took care of it.
You can't say if it was put in his personnel file? You know, we got animal control parked. Did they get a ticket? Did they get discipline? And we, we pay these people money to violate city parking handicap accessible. We, we give them raises to violate something? That's good. I'm glad you guys are doing that. You guys, the guys, the people that voted to approve pay plan, you guys should be ashamed of yourself. Should be real ashamed.
Your time's up. Thank you, sir.
All right. But you denied me my additional time.
Your time's up, sir.
And Liddell approved it.
Your time's up, sir.
Yeah, you did. You can shake your head all you want. So let me give you the facts.
Sir, you're being disruptive.
No, I'm not.
Sir, you're being disruptive. Time is up.
Liddell, the lady that came up, and one or two ladies chased.
We're going to recess until the gentleman can find a seat.
Yeah, constitutional rights. If you can't take the heat, don't run for election.
Sir, you are being disruptive, sir.
No, I'm not.
You're violating your time, sir. You're, you're out of time.
Trying to make my point. Michael Liddell is shaking his head that he didn't do it.
Sir, you're out of time.
So, take a recess. That's, that's what you do best. That's what you do best.
We'll come back to session. Is there anyone else in the audience? All right, we'll close citizen comments and move to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season. Thank you all.
Anything from our attorney's office today?
I would echo that. Happy holidays. Drive safe. Don't drink and drive. For my friends in the fire department, keep an eye on your tree. Don't let it get too dried out. Let's not have any excess fires this holiday season. Thanks.
All right. Go on to council comments. We'll start with Councilman Hirschberg.
Thank you, Council President. I'll keep it brief tonight. I did have a resident ask, resident asked me to get information relating to the most recent recycling load contaminations. So there's a percentage. If there's too much glass, if there's too much styrofoam in some of the loads, we pay a different price. A resident had asked me to relook at that. We looked at it a couple months ago, and I will say that it improved greatly from when we started. Unfortunately, I didn't get the numbers here before tonight's meeting, but I plan to share that info at the next meeting. And the thought behind it is really that if people know how much it's costing extra to put that kind of stuff in recycle bins, that maybe they'll stop. And I know that some of us on council had talked about doing, doing more to enforce that in the future. So that's that. Just one final comment on the pay plan vote. I really just thought it should be a one-year term. Obviously, we had all these different motions, all this different discussion. You know, it should come up every year. I'll leave it at that. And then I'll just say, congratulations to Councilwoman Green, who's outgoing here tonight on the council meeting. It was a pleasure serving with you. I just want to thank you for all the different issues that you brought forward and advocated for, and many of the things we agreed on, many things we didn't, but your service is definitely appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Green.
Thank you very much. I'd like to start by thanking the residents of Westland for allowing me to serve as your city councilwoman for the last four years. It has been an absolute pleasure. I am thankfully and very gratefully returning to the private sector as the owner of my property management and construction company, Greentight Management, which I stopped operating to focus on being an excellent city councilwoman for the last four years. And so I'm really looking forward to returning to the private sector. That is my, that is what I love to do in addition to helping people. So I look at this as, you know, onward and upward, but thank you so much for allowing me to serve. It's been a blessing and an honor. And if anyone needs my assistance after tonight, I don't plan on changing my cell phone number, especially residents that I've had the opportunity to help with food shortages or housing and slumlord issues. I am a real estate broker. I still have all of my relationships with HUD and, you know, different levels of government and law enforcement. So if I can ever help with anything, feel free to give me a call. My cell phone number, 734-828-7010. I'm still going to have that Facebook page, Councilwoman Tasha Green, so you can catch me through Messenger, too, but thank you so much. It's been an absolute, just, this is phenomenal, so thank you. And then to my colleagues, I want to thank you all. I know we have not, definitely have not agreed on everything over the years, but I think it was never personal for me. For me, it was always about putting the interest of Westland residents first, and I believe that I've done that in my four years. I'm very proud of many of the things I was able to accomplish, and I would not have been able to do that by myself. You know, as everybody knows, city council is one of se, I'm one of seven, and so I just wanted to say thank you, and I wish you all so much luck with continuing to move the city forward. And with that, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy Holiday, and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Move on to Councilman Godbout.
Thanks. I'd just like to thank Councilwoman Green for years of service on the city council, and as stated, we haven't always agreed, but again, it was, it was about business and running the business of the city, and so I wish you well in your future endeavors and much success in the future. And with that, I just wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, in whichever tradition you celebrate the holiday season, and I hope everyone has a safe and Happy New Year. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman McDermott.
Well, good evening. Councilwoman Rakowski had to step out. She wanted me to let everybody know that she is going to get her booster for her vaccine, so she certainly sends her best wishes and Happy Holidays and Merry Christmas as well. Wanted to start out by congratulating my colleague, Councilwoman Green, on her four years of service here in the city of Westland. One very important thing that we were able to, you know, accomplish together that really her leadership took, took on was the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Board. And, you know, while that, when we were voting on that board and while the process was going, it was more tense, and it got out of hand, and I regret the way that it ultimately went down, but I'm glad that she brought that forward. I'm glad that she pushed that initiative and saw it all the way through to the end, and that we did it the right way, and that we have a DEI board now, and it's a, it's a pretty, pretty good legacy to be proud of. So you should feel accomplished and proud of that, so thank you for, for bringing that initiative up. And, you know, again, even if we haven't always agreed on everything, thank you for your service of the community, and I certainly wish you the best in your future endeavors, whatever that may hold for you, and whatever, you know, path you choose to pursue, whether it's your business or any other path in the future, I certainly wish you all the best, and thank you for your years of service here in the city of Westland, and even the work you did prior to being on council. So that doesn't go unnoticed, and we thank you for that. Wanted to, you know, congratulate Blake on all the work that he does here in the community. I know, you know, Ray was up here the last time at, at the last council meeting talking about his accomplishments, and, you know, we know that in the field of, you know, mental health and working with people who are differently abled, we certainly congratulate Mr. Perry as well on all that he's done, and one thing that he, you know, brought up here this evening... And one thing that he, you know, brought up here this evening, and I know he doesn't want to get political, but I'm going to make this a little political, is the issue of guardianship. And there is a big need here in the state of Michigan for guardianship reform. I've experienced that firsthand with an uncle who suffers a disability and a mental illness on my mother's side of the family. So, you know, thank you for mentioning that. I think it's something that was, it goes woefully underserved and neglected here in Michigan in terms of guardianship reform. And then outside of that, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy Holiday. If you celebrated the Hanukkah holiday, certainly Happy Hanukkah to you too, and Happy Kwanzaa if you celebrate that as well. Hope you are all safe and have an enjoyable time with your family or your friends or whoever you have already gotten together with or choose to get together with in the future, and I look forward to seeing you all in the new year, and I hope that you all start out 2022 with a happy, healthy, and prosperous new year as well. And with that, I bid you all a Merry Christmas and a good evening.
Thank you. Council President Pro Tem Michael Londo?
Thanks, President Hart. Just briefly tonight, first, thank you to Councilwoman Green for your service for four years. It's not easy to be up here and do this job, so thank you very much for your four years of service, serving with you. Also, congratulations and thank you for the reappointments of John Elbrook, Jessica West, Julie Slayball, LaShawn Hart, Chris Galatas, and Cherie Khan. We appreciate your service to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. And just briefly on the, on the pay plan, there was a lot of discussion. We had about an hour and a half discussion before the council meeting tonight. I met with both Clerk LeBlanc and also the mayor's office for, at length, I would say. So there was a lot of discussion that went into it. I did have a lot of questions, and my questions were answered in private, and then also in the public study session as well before the council meeting tonight. And then just real quick with Councilwoman Rakowski, she was having a reaction to her booster shot, not going to get it. So she wasn't feeling well, so she had to step out, so I hope you'll understand that. And with that, Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year to everyone.
All right. I'd like to thank Councilman McDermott for leading us in the final Pledge of Allegiance for 2021, so thank you, I appreciate that. I'd also like to thank, again, Councilwoman Tasha Green for your four years of service. As all my colleagues have said, it's not easy to do, so we appreciate your time and your service. I think we'll all, he'll never be forgotten.
I don't think so either.
We haven't gotten along all the time, but you'll never be forgotten, I assure you that. And also, it's nice when I get to know something other people don't. Happy birthday tomorrow, by the way. Tomorrow's her birthday. She'll be 21 again, so go wish her a happy birthday tomorrow. And finally, for our friends on Bellevue and Grace, so I didn't make the meeting, had other, other things going on, I hope you can understand that. I have got some feedback from a couple colleagues who were there, but, and some email, Ben, got your email, and I replied back to that. So my colleagues know as well, I've taken some of your concerns, some other concerns that I've heard, and I've asked our city attorney to go through those and provide counsel with an opinion from the legal side so that we can kind of separate, you know, one, a couple things we're hearing and get some, a clear answer. So we're asking to get that done. Whenever the attorney can get through that, he will be emailing the council with his findings, or at least very much forwarding it to me, and I'll forward it off, but, so we'll get some more information. But that's what I've got right now, and I've committed to do that, and that's what we're doing. So beyond that, I'd like to thank you all. Merry Christmas, belated Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, whatever the case may be. Oh, Festivus, that's right. For Mike Care and Mike McDermott, Happy Festivus, so make sure that you do celebrate that with your aluminum pole and your feats of strength. And other than that, Happy New Year and go blue. Is there a motion to adjourn? Support.